...in the STARS report, you might find this is the all the information that you need. My visit to San Marcos today strangely enough was effective. They've had the STARS report for three years and now he's wanting to add an addition, the capture report that's in your, he wanted to add that.
So what's your recommendation that council accepted or minimum?
Everything that's the basic STARS report. I would not choose, and I suggested that our meeting not to choose the GL reports or any of the other reports until a later date when you decide. And what I try to do, and what I do later, is I will send those reports to you as a bonus for you to look at. And if you think you like it, like the Gallin has the capture report, because once they saw it, they realized, hey, we want that report. What that report does is it quarterly breaks down your city like, let's say, furniture. It will give you a percent. It will say seventy percent. And with our demographic and our analysis, what it's saying is that your city is capturing seventy percent of the sales tax market, and that thirty percent of the market is going outside of your city to buy furniture. Well, that helps your city make a decision. Hey, do we need another, should we lure another furniture store into our city? We're losing sales tax dollars for folks going outside. If you have a hundred and twenty percent in restaurant sales, that's saying that you're capturing, you're actually bringing in twenty percent additional revenue from folks outside of your city that come into your city to eat on a regular basis. That helps you make decisions relating to that part of your sales tax revenue. So that capture report can be very helpful. But again, I would wait until after you've had the STARS, go through several STARS reports, and then you can make a decision whether you want that report or not. The report, that capture report is only like, it's only like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a quart. It doesn't cost very much at all. Some cities have it, some cities don't. In other words, you always want to leave these options for a later date. I don't, the basic STARS report is plenty of information for your city to digest initially.
So they, these are part of the contract that is, you're just listing the options?
Correct. Exactly. They are options. Just like in the hotel contract, the option for us to do the state mandatory reporting that is an option, but if you want it, you sign it.
I think Mr. Reynolds would just consider the basics of the basic right here.
Okay, let me go on to, I'm going to move, item three C, consideration and action to approve him services LLC consulting services agreement to audit sales tax and wholesale tax. And we have a motion contained by Councilwoman Castillo.
Second motion?
Second by Councilman Nanda. All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries two. Okay, now we're going to go on to item two D, election update by the City State Attorney.
I was just providing, did they give you copies of them? I think they simply got them on your account, on the table, on the election calendar. Anyone for Nevada? Is that, I've got some. No.
The one that's wrapped at the top, Michael? It's a draft?
No. The one that you should have, she said November fourth, 2014, where it looks to be regular election. Bottom is yet.
Oh.
I, Ms. Castillo, I didn't give yours today, with the stuff that I gave you, when you get on the staff. will be able to have access to the election on Friday. It's, the date opened up is the 18th, but that's Saturday, so I'll have candidates ready on Friday, this, on the 18th. And it goes through August the 18th. For candidates signed. And then next meeting, I will have this, hopefully have the list of workers, and also the dates are on here for the early voting of what's required. I'll put the 10th and the 11th first, and then I'll have the two dates for the late nights for your approval for next project.
Monica, tell us how many applicants we got in the charter committee, which is paying the tuition?
We have eight individuals. There are, um...
One is not eligible, so they do not live in the city.
Right.
There are seven.
Yeah. There's one, there's one that she checked it off, but she doesn't live in the city. She lives in Chen. She just, she preferred, you know, she checked off seven different communities. So, and...
I think I only have like three applications.
You do.
I have six.
Okay, you got there, or in the folders?
There should be a folder each location?
There were mailboxes in the external. Right, right, so it's a bit of another folder?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to name those people or?
Sure.
I mean, I have one from Miss Wari. I have a, two of them missing. Okay. That one was terminated, I got it fit at, on the 10th at like nine o'clock in the evening. So, that, and then the one that's not eligible, the Councilwoman Castillo, was Juanita Rios, she lives in Wari, she voted in Chen. And then I have Melissa Small, and I have Sissy Gonzalez Dipo, and I have Jim Miller, I have Steve Deveraux, and I have Daniel Terrada, and I have Francis Gal. Those are the only... And it's up to the House of Governor to extend the timeframe, or at least, you know, you had said to them, I'm not.
I would like to decide when to execute them. Okay, now we're going to go on to...
Monica, this, now, it's going to be a redundant question. Does Jim Miller vote?
He voted in, he voted in the last election.
Has he provided his business land address on the application? Is that his residence?
The voter registrar gave him a voter registration.
I notice he has Kim Thirteen Street as his residence.
And that's what he provided?
As his business address.
Yeah. That's what he provided to the voter registrar as his, as his habit.
Isn't that the reason he's not always sitting up here is because he doesn't enforce it?
Right.
This is not a subject on your, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item two F, belt rate tariffs. Thank you for being patient.
Do you want me to put, do you just want to put, what do you want on the next agenda?
I'll let you know.
Mayor Dragan, Council, Senator Turner, thank you for the time that you've given us to speak with you tonight. I understand that through discussions, which is one brief presentation, a brief overview of what we've submitted to you since the last council meeting, and then to make myself available for questions, comments, or what. If this is not what you're looking for, I may not, if you'd like something besides that, please let me know, we'd be very happy to accommodate whatever council was looking for. If you'll recall, last month, we brought the issue to you for the updated revised and modernized rate structure for the board role like the lighting power system. And what it reflected in that revised rate structure was a three percent rate increase for our citizens. And if you'll recall, this was part of a comprehensive cost of service study that studied all the different rate classes from residential all the way to large, commercial, and industrial. So what you saw in the presentation I gave you on June the 12th, I believe, was, was not necessarily a cross-the-board, every rate category increased by three percent like Phelps had done historically for the last twenty-five or twenty-six years. We did another analysis of what the cost of service for each rate class looked like for the last time this was done, the one to meet a date. Our rate basis changed, our customer basis changed, our load shift has changed, our consumption numbers have changed, and it was well overdue for this study. So what I showed you is some rate classes increased by more than three percent, some increased by less than three percent, and there was a rate cluster two that actually saw would see a decrease in their rates going forward, what I presented. At that time, council tabled the issue and requested that I come back to you with a similar study, showing a one percent increase and a two percent increase based on the structure we provided. We sent that to council, I believe, on June the 26th. We sent you two different attachments, one of them, the CLOC chart at the top with the graphs at the bottom. There's three pages to that, requiring one percent, two percent, three percent rate increases. And then the second thing we've sent you is a copy of the presentation that we did at the, I think we were prepared to do it at the July 10th meeting last week, that had been postponed to tonight. So you have those two items before you. What I want to tell you, briefly speaking, is that the rate structure that we use today was very good for the late days and early times. It is a bad rate structure for what we have today in 2014 going forward. That's why we modernized the rates proposal and did what we did. The current CPS Energy contract we have for wholesale power expires at the end of 2015. That sounds like a long way off, but in reality, it's less than a year and a half. Before you know it, we'll be operating with a new form of contract, and the rate structure that we proposed to you now, and more actively reflects, goes a lockstep with the new CPS Energy contract. So what we're doing is we're trying to prepare for the future. We spent a lot of time at Phelps looking to the past and living in the past. We want to prepare for the future and get our electric utility in a position to do good things for the citizens of Wilson County, moving forward. The structure is what's key to this. We understand that council will always have concerns about rate increases. No one likes to hear the word rate increases. But what we have done is, well, honestly, the cost of doing business increases over time. You know, we would love to do everything we can to avoid rate increases. They're not fun for us, they're not fun for you, and certainly not fun for the citizens. But typically, what's recommended is rates increase in lockstep with the CPI from year to year, and we have not done that historically. We've always stayed below the CPI increases, looking back, and our intent is to hopefully do well with our efficiencies, our money savings, our running a tight budget, so that we can stay below CPI increases in the future. We're reviewing every contract, every agreement, every, every purchase that we make at Phelps to make sure that we're only purchasing what we need and getting the right product for the rest of the, for the best price, in order to keep our costs down, so hopefully we don't have to come to you with requests for rate increases on a more regular basis or a higher number. Excuse me, but you go to the grocery store, you go to the gas station, you know what it is, the way things are more expensive than they were this time last year, two years ago, three years ago, whatever it may be. I'll just use the cost of copper, for example. Copper in the electric utility industry is over a hundred percent more expensive than it was even five years ago. We use a lot of copper. And what we do every day, we use a lot of copper. It's in transponds, it's in wires, it's in meters, it's in, you know, nearly everything we touch has got copper in it, and so, and that's what we need. Not just us, but utilities have an issue with copper theft because it's become such a viable commodity. And so, what we're trying to do is, we are trying to get to a point where every customer in the belt system in Fort Worth, Scottville, both of Larnell City, the small communities in, in Karnes County pays their fair share for their electric bill. And we want, we propose a rate structure so that one rate class is not paying more than they need to pay to offset deficiencies in collections from under rate classes. So what we presented to you, and you should have in your packets, are the one percent proposal, the two percent proposal, and of course, we still include the three percent proposal that we gave you last month, so you can look at them side by side for comparison purposes. You know, we're, we're trying to make sure that each, like I said, each customer pays their fair share, and we'll keep them in a cost per kilowatt hour as reasonable as we can to all of our customers. If there are any questions, comments, anything you want to feel in terms of this time, or whatever the will of the council may give.
Can you explain to the people out in the audience about the more you use, the less the price will go down?
Under our current rate structure, right now, we have what's called a declining block rate structure, in that your first set number of kilowatt hours are charged at a certain cost per kilowatt hour. As you cross a certain threshold and go to the next block, your cost per kilowatt hour goes down. So you actually pay less per kilowatt hour for the thousandth kilowatt hour you use versus the first kilowatt hour you used. This was done, this rate structure was put in place, not just at Phelps, but in other utilities across the state in the late days, because the state of Texas had more generation, more power plants, going to have customers using electricity. These generating stations, these investors, what they call strength in investment, built these power plants, and they were not running. So the utilities got the cover and said, we need to find a way, at the behest of the power generators, that we could find a way to have our customers, give them incentive to use a little more, give them incentive to have it all by the accounts, give them incentive that they were large consumers. In the twenty-five years since we last put these rates in place, the market's flipped. You've heard numerous reports of conservation needed, rolling brownouts coming, and they happen in the winter, they happen in the summer. And the reason being is now is Texas has a shortage of generation. And we flipped, and in twenty-five year timeframe, we've gone from a thirty percent excess capacity market to a deficient market at some times. So we are putting a rate structure in place that does not encourage our customers to use more electricity. It encourages conservation, encourages energy efficiency, it encourages our customers to do what they need to do to save on their bill versus encouraging them to use more.
Do we have any citizens' comments on this? And I'm going to move up to, we consider an action to approve to propose rate tariff ordinance for Phelps. I make a motion.
I make a motion to approve a two percent proposed rate increase tariff ordinance for Phelps.
Do you want to have a second? A second. I have a motion by Councilman Nanda, second by Councilwoman Castillo, for two percent. All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three seconds.
Mayor, thank you for your time, Council. Thank you for your time.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item two G, municipal court quarterly report, and I think Brandon will do it.
My name is Brandon Hauchens, and I present the brief community on the item municipal court. Tonight, I will be delivering the jury court report and municipal update. If you will please locate the municipal court report, filed cases for the city of Forest Health, beginning April 4th through June of 2014. Should be in my paper. Please let me know when you're ready to proceed. Violations filed, traffic was two sixty-six, state law was sixty-three, city ordinance was nine, and parking was two, with a total of filed violations of three forty. Completed cases, by fine was one, before the judge, seventy-nine, eighteen, or seventy-nine traffic, eighteen in state law, city ordinance was one, and parking was zero. Before the judge, total was ninety-eight, and total completed was ninety-nine. Other completed cases, dismissed by DSC mandatory, traffic was seven. State law, city ordinance, and parking were zero, for a total of seven, dismissed by DSC mandatory. Dismissed after deferred disposition, traffic was fifty-nine, state law was six, city ordinance was one, and parking was zero, for a total dismissed by deferred disposition of sixty-six. Dismissed presented insurance, traffic fourteen, state law, city ordinance, and parking zero, for a total of fourteen. Dismissed by judge, traffic, state law, two, city ordinance, I'm sorry, traffic and state law were zero, city ordinance was two, parking was zero, for a total of two, dismissed by judge. Compliance dismissals, traffic twenty-three, state law, city ordinance, and parking zero, for a total of twenty-three. Dismissed by prosecutor, traffic seventeen, state law nine, city ordinance one, parking zero, for a total of twenty-seven. Way of juvenile jurisdiction, traffic zero, state law thirteen, city ordinance and parking zero, for twenty thirteen. Way of docket, traffic two, state law, city ordinance, and parking zero, for a total of two. Total other completed, one fifty-four, grand total completed, two fifty-three, net difference completed as eighty-seven. Warrants issued, traffic thirty, state law nine, city ordinance one, parking one, total violations of forty-one, total warrants issued, forty-one. Warrants cleared, traffic sixty, state law five, city ordinance one, parking one, total violation was sixty-seven, total warrants cleared, sixty-seven. Change in total warrants was twenty-six. Other paid cases, paid by fine, other toll paid fines of thirty-nine. The, this at the bottom is the list of court costs, broken down by each cost, and for the total fines and fees paid of forty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Wanted to give you an update on our mine barter collections. Our initial test batch of warrants has been sent to mine barter for collections, and we are waiting the collections data regarding priority. Once we receive that information, then the rest of the warrants will be going to collection. And as we know, COPSEC has come online with the police department, and our officers have been doing a wonderful job out there, and as such, there has been a drastic increase in the case load in municipal court. Any questions? Thank you. I'll have one.
No, I can give those questions.
I do those questions.
Okay, let's go. Just so that I can learn this.
Okay.
Okay, what does it mean when it says dismissed after deferred disposition? Does that mean they go to a class, and then after they complete that?
The deferred disposition is an informal probation. They ask the court to defer judgment for a certain period of time. They're not allowed to have any additional citations within that time period, and they pay a deferred fee. If they comply with the terms, then at the end of the probationary period, it's dismissed.
Is there a norm to the probation period?
The probationary period, the minimum is thirty days, the maximum is six months, and that's per state law.
And the dismissed DSC mandatory?
The DSC mandatory is a driving safety course. They have to fill certain qualifications, they cannot have a CBL, they cannot be reckless driving, can't be doing over twenty-five knots over the limit. They have to take a class, then upon completion of the class, it's dismissed if they don't have any additional citations.
What's the transparency prevention fund?
The transparency prevention fund is a new fund that the state set up to, to help with the transparency prevention. For, I believe it is, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, I would have to verify, but I believe it is for courts within certain areas that want to have a driven out case manager, then that transparency prevention fund would help with that, with that. But I would have to verify that.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item two H, city managers' municipal court.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I submitted a report to you for your review, I'll just do an overview for it. We start off with a local district's mayor on the front, and we're really excited about the hyperbole trail. We actually went on site, and we're able to do that, it's moving forward, reference to the signage. They will be trying to do a recording in September, in October, fourteen, different agencies are having an annual conference here, and so they're going to be hosting a re-creating ceremony on site to do that, and hopefully with the hyperbole trail. I also participated in some local community events that I listed here for you. The annual drinking water quality report I gave to you for, actually is in here. So everybody, it looks like this pamphlet here is attached to that report, and there's some here for our residents as well, that's required for us to do, who received it from the mayor. Did you all get this?
I don't have my package.
Oh, you have one, please have.
I'll take it, I'll take it out.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm just giving you the real. And so there's some of the front counter, you should have received it now, and this was required for us to have to do, so I'm going to give you a copy in reference to that. We did these with the fire department, which are...
Do you want to elaborate where we get our drinking water from?
It'll talk about our drinking water, it'll talk about how wonderful it is, and we get our departments, and just getting noticed the other day, the mayor brought it to my attention on TCQ, and he was asking where do we get the water from? From the wonderful authorities, we're in the state of Texas. But on the drinking water, we will be enforcing some things that relate to water conservation, that you need to do, as well as our RCZ ban, and I have a wonderful team, I'll give you this to my left, that will be helping to enforce that. I'm working with MDC, as well as Wilson County, and the attorney in reference to, there's some properties in parks that are owned by other people that actually need to be part of the city. There's some properties that are vacant lots that the county's going to donate to the city. Donate, I like that word. And so we're hoping that we can work that together, and the attorney has the lead, as their attorney will move it forward. Also, the health instructions, we're hoping that we can get that going. As part of our TCQ requirement, we have a grease ordinance, but like I said, I told you, we're experiencing the grease monster. the grease monster and we're having some issues with our local ordinance, and so we're hoping that the health inspections can help us address some of those texts, and our goal is to have that uh in August of twenty fourteen. Uh the mayor and I were able to meet with the volunteer fire department, we need to establish an intergovernmental agreement, this is something that's been on board for some time, and we're hoping to bring that together. I have uh the first draft, I reviewed it with the attorney this morning, uh gave it yesterday, so we're hoping that we can give that to them, uh for them to review, and they're coming to our budget workshops. And this, and post-up, I say, no, I'm just. A post-up. Uh we've actually been on Thursday, we striked her property that we talked about in reference to our parking issue. If you look on the picture, see on my report, there's pictures of what we striked. She's right across from the Catholic church, she's been having this issue with people parking and blocking her side of her driveway, and so we were able to strike that, we will monitor to see how it goes forward, but now the police can kind of maybe know when that supposed to park, we've struck it, so that's done, and we're hoping that we can go forward. Um I have some staff here to report to you, so I'll share it for you. Sorry, do you all have a question?
None of us have that.
I think you emailed it, I printed it out, but.
Okay, um there's some extra copies there. I want to ask each court pictures, I want to.
Everybody wants one?
I don't want you to miss that one, but we'll look at pretty pictures, but what we have, a police officer here, Sergeant Daria, she's here to report. We had, if I can, there was a misplace the last time Daria was here on her flat.
Daria? No, wait. Can you spell your name, Daria? Daria. No, it was actually, just, they didn't put sergeant. We just wanted you to go back again.
So we are presenting her, her plaque, it says, honoring Sergeant Daria Bora for twenty fourteen, a recognition of her ten year dedication service to the city of Florida. And Daria's gonna give a police report, and we're also happy to have the chief's access to the.
Good evening, Council, thanks for having me here, and I know in the interest of time, I would not take more, probably forty-five minutes to an hour, so we should be out of here or quit by the time everybody's ready to go to bed, okay?
Okay.
Um actually, first of all, I just wanted to thank you, we have COPSync in place, it's been an amazing tool, has helped us immensely already, and it's only gonna improve. It, it, one of the things that we were excited about getting this is, all five officers, possibly five officers a year are killed writing citations on the side of the road, doing ill fashion like, standing outside on the side of the road. COPSync allows us to sit in the vehicle and make it much easier, smoother transition, so it's a very good thing for us. Just since, uh I didn't know I was gonna make this presentation, so I don't have a lot of information for you, but I did have, just since uh May of this year versus June of this year, uh June one, we came onboard with, uh online with COPSync. June one, the citations, I'll say, I'll do it individually, citations in May were ninety-four, citations now that we've got COPSync in place in June, four hundred and two. Amazing, amazing difference, increase of three hundred and twenty-eight percent. So, not that, not that anybody in here got a citation, but you know, just other people. Warnings issued in May, two hundred and sixteen, in June with COPSync in place, three hundred and thirty, uh three hundred and thirty-five. So our totals, three hundred and forty citations and warnings issued in the month of May of this year, and seven hundred and thirty-seven citations. It's a very much quicker process, the officers are allowed, but they're, they're cutting their time in half because everything's automated for us, it makes it much easier. Because I'm on the streets, I can speak of the expediency that we experience, and it's a wonderful, wonderful tool for us on the street.
And Daria, is my understanding correct, we've gone on, did y'all get issued more than one ticket on the same case?
That's correct, that's correct. And we could do that before the judge was gonna have to allow us to put a couple on the competition, but the truth is, this is a much easier process because it, it just, everything's readable, everything's legible.
I saw what I've done.
Yes, it's, it's a long piece of paper, but uh everything's very legible and very understandable, very easy to process, it's very easy for the citizen, uh and then it's also very easy for the officer to keep track of it. I'll tell you, one of the things that, uh because I do the racial profiling report, one of the things I noticed the other day, it does not track our warnings, uh it only tracks our citations. So I contacted COPSync, uh maybe Monday night, and I spoke with them about it, they're aware of it, they're aware that it's an issue, and we have to send it, I'm waiting for the chief to come back, I've sent an email, um they just need us to send an email requesting that. We still can't access it on our system, but we can ask them to produce it for us and, and send it to us monthly. We're still gonna do it the manual way for the rest of this year, probably, just to make sure that we're all on board, um but it's, it is, it's an odd deal, I have no idea, he couldn't even answer why, they don't, but they will be able to do that once we send them an email requesting it. Just a couple other comparisons I wanted to give you, from June of two thousand thirteen to, to June of two thousand fourteen, comparing the two months, again with COPSync in place in two thousand fourteen, citations issued one hundred and eight in June two thousand thirteen, to four hundred and two in June, that's a huge difference, this is, this is just an absolutely wonderful tool for us. So, uh overall, I don't have anything else on that subject with you, but uh it's, it's been a terrific tool, since I'm on the street, I use it, I can absolutely vouch, vouch for it, uh the need for it, it's, it's a great tool for us, so thank you for.
Can you explain just in a small?
Forty-four minutes?
First of all, I think it's easier for the people to realize they have that ticket, because you can't lose it because it's a free. But if you can just talk about, like, when y'all issue out your tickets and when y'all come back to the, you need, you know, a docket or something like that?
No, we don't have that, and, and the, uh, the judge doesn't have that, we're, we're still working on getting her in, set up with that, which would be exactly that, it would be a docking station, so everything would just be automatic for her computers to pull it all, or not at that point yet, uh but it's a process. As it is now, we literally print out two copies, uh they get one and we keep one, and that goes to the judge. Uh that's it, that's, that's literally, but it is.
Still manually inputting?
Yes.
So how soon before they get hooked?
Budget, budget.
Hopefully budget. It was an, it was an additional expense, so.
The funds in the technology fund?
I'm waiting on that.
Was it like four thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, the equipment from the docket and also there, a module that has to be added from INCODE to be able to add to our module that was not budgeted or funded for in this fiscal year. So we're actually coming back with the judge and Brian herself, so that we can look at buying the equipment, the hardware, what do we need to do, the equipment, and how to upgrade the equipment, so we have to add a whole court module that we need to add. I think we're talking about four thousand dollars, is that what I'm talking? About four thousand dollars, we need budget, and we're hoping that the technology fund that they have already in this for court, that's the duty that's due to you.
What will I do to the judge's office once she's got the paperwork?
Well, it's gonna help her get to take on this volume, if there was a percentage was three hundred percent.
Three hundred percent?
Uh to, to take on that, be able to automate it, so they will come in and have the docking thing, it's a dock, they can actually load them up, and then it will actually save for the data entry, it'll also help attract maybe users at full force of what is intended to be.
And saving time, very much.
It's gonna save the time, definitely, definitely, because right now, we have the judge and wonderful time for, for secondary, for acceptance, it does everything, so it's a one.
Multitasking. We appreciate that, Brandy. Thank you, Brandy. You do a great job.
Um one of the other things, sorry, I'll, I'll just take another minute, one of the other things is, uh, COPSync has its own report writing capability. We can, our officers can literally stay in the field versus going back to the PD and sitting down and tugging out their reports, is a huge time saver. However, I believe we've got some concerns with the badge system that we have in place now, it's our report writing system that we've had for a very long time, so I think that there's a little bit of a concern on the investment of that, but this would streamline, we need no additional software, nothing, so the COPSync has the capability for us to do our reports, so it's something that we're gonna try and integrate eventually, uh I think that the, the city manager, the chief, maybe the lieutenant are working on that together, so we can see what, but I think it would be a definite addition, because it keeps our officers on the street instead of in our office doing reports, and of course, our volume has increased on reports. A couple other things we'll wait, that haven't, I'll be here twenty, thirty minutes, real quickly, um, the CIV has, has seen an increase in portrait cases, that's our biggest thing right now, we've got a lot of county money coming through, fives, tens, twenties, they're going as low as five, so they're a little bit harder to detect in, in a business, and I'm paying these close attention because they're small bills. I did a presentation with the city county, with the, with the Chamber of Commerce not too long ago, and I showed them some of the bills that are being passed in the city, and some of them are ridiculously simple to understand in the city, but some of them are not so much, so it's just something that we're dealing with a little bit more. Also, we have some uh fortune checks coming through, so the CIV is working on that, and uh we are in the process of working on the budget, and we're working on updating the department policy and procedure manual, and, and, oh, doctor vehicles, it is, it is here, and we got it, uh graph, the graphics yesterday are completely, so they brought it back, so we just have to get the uh radio in, everybody pick up the unit tomorrow, uh the graphic, the radio is in, they gotta get that in the car, and the computer, other than that, we're good to go. Any questions?
Yeah, that day, we've been trying to figure out, what is the maker of the vehicle?
It's a four wheeler, it, it's.
Intersect.
It's the newest, most coolest vehicle on the street.
They didn't let you drive it, I think, they didn't say it.
Oh, well, you can drive it anytime and watch.
And I read the button things with Simon.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that's, we expect it. Is there anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, back to my board, did you see the pretty pictures, yes? Rudy, do you have a question or statement, sorry?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a statement? Uh, okay. Uh we're gonna move on in the report to um our community development project, and if I could take this opportunity to introduce Cindy, who's, who's been working, and she has those numbers in front of everyone else, so Cindy, you know, also, I'd like to introduce our new director of community development, her name is Mimi Riley. Mimi is a resident of Pleasanton, Texas. She's been joining us and helping working with Cindy in reference to our planning and zoning that we have on board, and our permitting, our annexation and those kind of things that we talked about earlier. So she came onboard on Monday, and so I'd like to officially introduce you, she's there. Her office is right next to, in the area of our permitting, right there with Cindy and CJ, and so we want to have an opportunity for you all to meet up. Cindy, Mimi, you want to present something?
Hi. Good evening, sorry, evening, Mayor Council. Um I'm very happy to be here, it's been the third day, I am already jumping in, taking on projects in different paths, and I'm very excited to do so, and soon to be moving to Forestville as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So Cindy's gonna go, or her report in reference to the, this, I'm quoting from that one. Uh in reference to updating for the month of June, uh permits in reference to that.
I'll make it really nice. What we had going on in June, and that was important, we had five new home construction permits that were issued, and I'm thinking your report to see the addresses when we issued those permits. Uh we had a commercial addition, we had the Wilson County Courthouse that's, that's got their permit for their foundation and shoring of the building. We've issued six accessory building permits, one manufactured home, one residential addition, thirty-four AC refrigeration permits, the, the brunt of those permits, they're doing a lot of improvements at the Forestville Square project. We had two side permits for the, for the renovated um additions of the H2B convenience store, we had one food service permit, nine electrical, seven new service permits, two irrigation, and nine plumbing. I've issued over seventy-nine permits in the month of June. What we've got going on with the planning and zoning is, we're meeting with, we're calling us the PDB team, uh we met on June the fifth, um the project is moving forward, and it'll be on the council agenda in August for a new one approval. I did meet with Mr. Brown and Mr. Tommy Baker at the FDC, um they're wanting to, I hate to say it this way, but they wanted to develop a mancap located at ETJ on the business unit. I mean, no negative, but I think that's what it was. We're preparing and we're starting to coordinate all the public hearings for the PDB, the Riverman project. Um I've also processed a rezoning application for five sixty-six Fourth Street and another various application for nine oh two First Street. The plans have built for the corner store has been submitted, demolition was originally for the sixteenth of this month, and it moved it back to the twenty-first. The demolition of the current, the old winds, the old admin school building. In the last month, I did attend a floodplain management seminar to give my continuing education. That's by here? Got any questions?
Cindy?
Yes, ma'am.
The item, um, we're laying through the FDC, discussing management, what's there now? It's kind of a one, that thing is just lying?
It's just land. Yes, ma'am. It's just land. There was interested parties that met with a developer and Mr. Baker on, you know, what, what they could do to bring that there at the property.
And what happened?
It was just the first meeting, uh I, we haven't done any other meetings after that. Yes, ma'am.
On the back of that Walmart property, it's, it was annexed, is part of it?
That's not annexed.
It's not, maybe it is.
It's considered in the ETJ, yes.
Isn't that right next to Mr. Lumber, probably where we have all those?
Further down.
Yes, in the corner of the corner.
Uh I have not got any phone calls for that.
I mean, I just heard a.
But there's, here's, yes, sir. Officially, I haven't had any phone calls.
What's the definition of a mancap, really? Mobile, I mean, RVs?
It could be RVs, manufactured homes, cabins, it could be called that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to our community development team, and we're looking forward to them coming towards. Uh the next item is, um, is actually a court enforcement. CJ has come to us, she's been given enough, she's about an advocate of court enforcement, and her report is in here as well, that speaks to what she's been doing activity, and I know of some or others, but definitely, we want to talk it up, the court enforcement going with that, so CJ's giving us time.
Hello, everybody, some of you I've met, and it's really friendly, it's really comfortable. Um I have sent out, for June, I've sent out fifty compliance letters, there's more to be sent out, um so there'll be more drawn out. I've met with Dr. Deason regarding the gene i forms in the submental, because when I was noticing we're getting the, just in fact, the results, they were putting the city of Forestville as the owner of the stray animals. Well, what that could do is, that could cause somebody that got bit by an animal to sue the city because it was being put on there that we were the owners of the animal, which is not true. So, um, I spoke to the people in San Antonio about their gene i forms, and they're okay with Dr. Deason just putting the address of where the animal was located, because then that doesn't put us at fault for that animal, so that went very well. We, I've assisted with several of the residents for some of their stray cats, um and not only code compliance, but as you see, I'm doing some of the animal issues too, um because I am certified with the state of health services. I've got online certification, so that's something I'm helping out, because we only have Nito, but he's got several other jobs that he does also. I've had worked on, we've had residents here that had thirteen dogs, uh PD had called us because they went out to strip some warrants and they found a resident with thirteen dogs. Well, your ordinance takes four, um so we've gotten them to comply and they're now down to four, which is really good. I also represent the city on the local rabies control authority here, which the state has now notified that, um what that means is now, when there's a bite case, whenever there's an animal. Um, and what that means is now, when there's a bite case, uh, whenever there's an animal that has to be tested, then I would do the reports. Um, I have made some bite reports, that way it makes it easier, so if you ever want to see one, let me know. Um, and I'm currently working on updating animal ordinance, because it needs to be a little stricter. There needs to be more info than what's in there now. And that's about it.
Thank you, CJ, appreciate that. Um, Alex wasn't able to make it tonight, he has a better community. But, um, Alex Junior, I know most of you all know Alex, our park supervisor, is actually now, has moved to our street supervisor. Um, he is completing all of our open, uh, work orders that are there, and actually working with, um, staff in reference to our park supervisor, which I'll be interviewing on Monday. We've had several, uh, internal staff to apply for that position, as well as some external staff, and I'll be reporting to you as to the new, uh, parks director. Um, but on Saturday, we had an opportunity to go around the pickup branch pickup. I ended up, well, we all listed and not, but we were able to go and do some seniors curb side as well. Uh, the public did a great job, as usual, to show up with all the equipment there, but we had a really good turnout for cleanup. And so as CJ has been working and notifying everybody to cut and clean up, we encourage people to get into the curb. We had over thirty people call in, uh, we want to thank Wilson County News for giving the word out. And so hopefully, our next one is in October, right before the peanut festival?
The weekend, the Saturday, the fourth of September.
So we're gonna encourage people to clean up, and then again, the curb side. Now, it is a cost to the city, but I think it's worth it because we definitely want to clean up. We were able to go drive around the entire city to pick up these branches, uh, we have workers who go back and pick up some tires. County allowed us to put the tires at their location, so it's been a joint effort, and I think they're doing a really good job. So it's three a year, so October's our last one, and then we reset the clock to do it again. And thank you, Mayor, and wonderful company out there driving, I had my boots on, but the guys were working so fast, they didn't want the bus to pick up any branches, so they did, they did. Um, Andrew's out, uh, on vacation, um, he is our new, our water supervisor. And, uh, there were a lot of questions in reference to the USDA application. Uh, he has received the sewer modeling project.